I'd go ahead and call the regular city council meeting to order on Tuesday, February 5th, 2013. Roll call, please. Or, excuse me, I'm sorry. Before we move to the roll call, we have a very special meeting for you tonight. We are going to move directly into the invocation by which Ernest Whitehead is going to give us that invocation. He is also the vice chairman of our Board of Adjustments. After which, we will have the National Anthem sung by Ernest's son, Logan, and after which the Pledge of Allegiance will be led us by Councilmember Brown. So, if you'd please stand.
Our Heavenly Father, we come before you grateful for this day. We beg and petition your spirit to be upon this gathering, this meeting. We pray that you give this body, Mayor Price, and everyone on City Council insight, wisdom to make decisions in the best interest of the city. So, we pray for wisdom, we pray for understanding, we pray that the body here gathered may conduct our speech and conduct in a worthy manner according to your word. Certainly, Fathers, we look in the critical times that we're living in, and we see the events unfolding around the world. We appreciate more on a daily basis the men and women who serve, our first responders, our chief of police and his force, and the chief of fire and his department, as they deal with events on a daily basis. We certainly appreciate the care and their giving of themselves to protect our city and care for its members. So, Father, we leave this meeting, this gathering, in your care, as we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
By Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which France, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all other.
Thank you. May be seated. Again, Logan is eight years old, and he attends the Legacy School, so let's give him one more round of applause. Thank you. We're going to move to roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Chappados?
Here.
Councilwoman Gussie?
Here.
Councilmember Kimball?
Here.
Councilmember Potter?
President.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Here.
Mayor Price?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great. As we move into Section 3, the Proclamations, Acknowledgements, and Awards, under 3.1, we're going to do a proclamation proclaiming the month of February 2013 as Black History Month. And we also have a special program for you today. Going to talk a little bit about the proclamation, and then we're going to turn some time over to Councilmember Brown, who's going to speak on Black History Month. And then, we're going to have a short video presentation, and I'll let Councilmember Brown take it from there. So, with that, before we go, I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation real quick. It says, "Whereas diversity of social identity, including racial and cultural identity, contributes positively to the development of society and is a matter of pride and celebration; whereas Americans of African descent have made valuable and lasting contributions to our country and our state, achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, and the arts; and whereas in 1976, Black History Month was adopted to honor and affirm the importance of the history of African-Americans and to focus on the stories and teachings of those who helped build our nation, advance the cause of civil rights, and strengthen families and communities. And whereas the city of Maricopa continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. Now therefore, I, Christian Price, Mayor of the city of Maricopa, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2013 as Black History Month in the city of Maricopa, Arizona. And we urge all citizens to join with us in celebrating the significance of black culture in its past, today, and going forward into the future, dated this day, the 5th of February 2013." Thank you. As I turn this over to you, Councilmember Brown, I'm going to hand this to you, if you would like to take that.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
As many of you may or may not know, the Black historian Carter G. Woodson, in 1926, had the idea of having Black History Week. And it was going to be the second week of February, because that was the birthday of President Lincoln, as well as the great leader Douglas Marshall, Frederick Douglass. It was only in 1976 that Congress declared it Black History Month, and that was also recognized by the United Kingdom, as well as Canada. Gerald Ford, President Gerald Ford was president at that time, and he said at the time, "I seize upon the opportunity to honor the two often neglected accomplishments of black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history." Now, much would trigger that, President Ford, because President Ford played in University of Michigan football team in the 1930s as a center. The end of that team was Willis Ward, who was the first black later football player in the history of University of Michigan football. They became very close friends, and in 1934, when Georgia Tech refused to play against Michigan because they had a black player, Gerald Ford protested vehemently. And that experience led him to recognize, along with so many have recognized, the maltreatment throughout history of likes have received. They have excelled in every phase of society, science, the arts, inventions, you name it. Likes have exceeded and excelled. So, this is just one token tonight of what I hope to be built upon every year, and hopefully work very closely with the school system. It's important that our youngsters recognize that diversity is tremendously important. And lastly, I don't know how many of you recognize that prior to George Washington, there were seven presidents. George Washington only became president after the U.S. Constitution was adopted. In the other causes of the Confederation, the first president was a man named John Hanson, who was black, who served 1781, 1782. President Hanson established the great seal of the United States, which all presidents have since been required to see all official documents. He also established the first Treasury Department, the first Secretary of the War, the first Foreign Affairs Department, and lastly, he declared the 4th Thursday of November to be Thanksgiving Day. That's a bit of history that I'm sure many of you did not realize. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Appreciate it. We're now going to have a short video presentation, after which, we are going to take a short recess, and we'll enjoy some cookies and punch in the lobby here in the foyer. We also want you to understand that although it's an excellent time to socialize, the Legacy students here today will be, some of them are dressed as famous African-American inventors, and they're going to perform some very short skits for us, so I hope you'll look forward to that.
This video is the Black National Anthem, so I'd appreciate if you'd stand.
(Music)
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 We have Ron Bat, Ryan Atwood, Ted Yocum, Tony Gray, Vincent Manfredi, Bob Marsh, Ernest Whitehead, Joanne Miller, Julie Stanfield, Linda Chaney, and Phyllis von Fleckinger. And so those will be the official members of the Steering Committee. That committee will meet until the zoning code rewrite is finished. Okay? That is all I have from the Mayor's Report, but before moving on, I'm going to turn some time over to Councilmember Campbell, who has asked for a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've prepared a statement, so I'm just going to read from it if you don't mind. "To my friends, neighbors, fellow members of council, and to everyone I serve as a city council member, I would like to briefly address my recent citation. Many of you have questions; I understand that. The ability to question our elected representatives freely is an essential part of being an American. Another essential part of being an American is having a justice system that works, a system that dispenses justice to everyone speedily, fairly, regardless of their place or position in life. As your city council member, I want to answer your questions, all of them, and I am working to ensure that those questions will be answered as promptly as possible. As soon as the legal process allows me to, you will have answers directly from me to all of your questions. My goal and commitment to each of you is to have this matter completely resolved as expeditiously as the justice system allows. In the meantime, I ask for your patience. I also ask for your forgiveness, and I do humbly apologize for allowing this to become an unwanted distraction to the city of Maricopa. You have every right to expect that those representing this community will do so to the very best of their ability, and I will continue to do that." Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. With that, the Mayor's Report is complete, and we will move on to a report from the City Manager. City Manager? Nothing. Smoke signals work too, that's fine. Thank you. We will move on to the call to the public. This is your opportunity to approach the council, say what's on your mind, let us know things that are going on in your life. We ask that you please keep it to approximately three minutes tonight, as we are running a little behind schedule due to the events. At the same time, also understand that it's not typically a time which the city council responds, so that's just an FYI. And I do have a speaker card, so before we open it up to everybody, I would like to open it up to Hearts and Hooves of Arizona. They would like to speak first. If you'll approach, go ahead and approach the podium and state your name for the record. Thank you.
You're part of it. Councilmembers, Mayor, just wanted to firmly introduce ourselves. My name is Robert Vanisdale, and this is my wife Stacy. Nine months ago, we, I mean, let's see how to start this. Been here 30 years. We had land here for about 30 years. It's a little, small town. Never thought it would actually get this big. I never thought that would be that many people, never thought it would have homeless people here, homeless kids. And nine months ago, we found out there was 40 homeless children here. So my wife and I, with our sister, Hearts, I mean Sunshine Acres, is a ranch and outreach for homeless children over there in Mesa. Basically, they've been in business since 1954. They've housed over 1,600 kids already. Right now, they got 70. They're a complete nonprofit. They don't take no state, no federal funding. Everything's based on Christian belief and donations. Aunt Vera, Aunt Jim, Jim basically started this from nothing, and they're successful. Wonderful kids that's been there, grew up there, and very successful. And one of the things, when we found out there was 40 kids here in Maricopa, we wanted to do something, something similar to them. So we introduced ourselves over there to Sunshine Acres. We got familiarized with what they'd done, and when we met, we found out that they had all these homeless children here, we decided, you know, let's start Hearts and Hooves of Arizona. And so Sunshine Acres found out about my wife and I, gave us their whole manual to start Hearts and Hooves of Arizona out of 54 years. So we've been doing this for nine months. We got our first two children in December. We weren't supposed to even have kids until June 1st of this year. The thing is, what we're looking for is basically, we already got five acres with 22 animals. We just want, we were looking for 20 acres, so we can start building the facilities so we can take care of all Penale County, you know? So that's who we are, and I let my wife just...
Basically, we just came to the city council meeting tonight to just kind of let everybody know who we are, what we do, that we're here, we're in the development stages, and we just want to invite everybody to get involved, however, you know, they feel called to do so. This is a project that's probably going to take the next five to seven years to develop before it's actually in the ground. We're just laying the groundwork, building the foundation, and we just want to make sure that everybody is aware of our presence in the city. And we look forward to building a strong partnership with the city of Maricopa, with the Ochpin tribal community, and however it grows from there, and however we're blessed from there, that's what we're looking forward to. We've got the groundwork, we've got the basics, and we've got a really strong mentor in Sunshine Acres, and we've been blessed to have that. So we just want to make sure that everybody's aware that we're here, and we're hoping that the city will endorse us and acknowledge the fact that we are here and we're ready to do this in Maricopa. We want Maricopa to be the leader for a great example of how we handle our youth, and we want to make sure that other cities follow suit. So we'll be, we'll make sure that we stay in contact with the, with the city, and we come to more of these meetings and make sure that we get everybody involved and keep this more of a village and not just a town. It's going to take all of us to get rid of this homeless child problem in Penale County.
Thank you very much. At this point, it's open to the public. Anyone who'd like to do a call to the public? Mr. Wade.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Henry Wade, 42581 West Shamana Drive. I just want to do this because I just want to make sure it gets done. And I want to thank you, Councilman Brown, for bringing tonight's event to Maricopa, and for you, council members, for having the vision and foresight to allow this to take place. I'm very proud of Maricopa tonight. I have some, some significant days where I'm very proud of being in Arizona, and tonight's one of those nights, so thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wade. Very kind. Anybody else? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and move on to the minutes. Need an approval of the minutes, 7.1 and 7.2. Have a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Have a second? No. Three on the motions. Any seconds?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Going to move to the public hearing on 8.1. The mayor and city council share her public comment regarding the conditional use permit, a request for conditional use permit by Tai Southwest to allow professional office use in the general rural residential zoning district located at 44302 West Maricopa-Cassagrand Highway. This conditional use permit is to allow, is to allow the continued use of the property for professional services, as previously approved by the city council on December 19th, 2006, for a period of four years, under CUP 06.03. At this point, if you wish to speak on this issue during the public hearing, may approach the podium and speak to this issue only. Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Moving on to consent agenda. Item nine. Can I have a motion to approve consent, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now moving on to Section 10 and the regular agenda. We're going to move to item 10.1, SPR 12-11. The mayor and city council shall discuss and possibly take action on approving a site plan review case SPR 12-1, City of Maricopa Regional Park Discussion and Action. Reuben?
Rudy, sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I apologize. I think I've done that to you twice now.
That's all right.
I'm so sorry.
Mayor, city council members, as, as you stated, Mayor, this is a request for site plan review and approval of the regional park for the city of Maricopa. The proposed regional park includes various amenities to the park, which is stated in the staff report, but I'll just list a couple items. Five-acre park, one skate park, two playgrounds, and horseshoe pit, and again, there's various elements that's also noted in the staff report. Briefly, this case did receive a board of adjustment variance approval on January 15th for height deviation in the parking lot lights and also the sport court lights. That variance approval was approved on January 15th. In addition, planning zoning gave a recommendation of approval on January 7th. With this, with that, I would like to go ahead and pass this, have a presentation by Jeff Engelmann, our J-2 representative who was involved in designing the park.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, council members, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to take the final step in regards to site plan approval for the Vico Park. Just wanted to refresh everybody's memory about where the project started about 10 years ago, when the Parks and Recreation Master Plan identified the need in this part of the city for a regional park, and it was master planned at that time or shortly thereafter in regards to what was to be included in the park master plan itself. What we did as a consultant and with the city's help, much help, we gained public input in driving the overall design of the project, in meeting with the Parks, Recreation, and Library Committee, city park and recreation staff, instructors from various athletic programs around the city. We attended the Great American BBQ, Youth Council, movie in the park, pre-city council meetings, opportunities for residents within the city of Maricopa to give us their wants and needs for this recreational park, which led to the master plan that stands behind me and is on your screens in front of you. I'm just going to take a little bit of a walk around the park. The multi-generational facility is really the driving force in regards to the architectural elements that enhance the park itself, and that drove what the project is going to look like when it's constructed somewhere in the first quarter of 2014 and open for public use. So picking up on the architectural elements within the Recreation Center, we have numerous Ramadas for picnicking by families and/or large groups located strategically located throughout the park. We have both large and small Ramadas, if it comes up. I'll explain it. The large and small Ramadas, again, pick up on the architectural features that are prevalent at the multi-generational facility in regards to its roofing, in regards to its walls, its columns, its blockwork, so that the park will appear to be unified from one end to the other. We have public restrooms located, obviously, in the multi-generational center, as well as strategically located in both the northern and southern portions of the park, as well as right in the middle of the Fourplex Ball Field complex. Those items are outlined in those yellow highlighted areas on the map. The park restroom building, just like the Ramadas, picks up on the architectural vocabulary of the Multi Gen Center in regards to its roof lines, block material, and other materials, again, making it a seamless park from one end to the next. A park of 110 acres is nothing if you can't maintain it, and Jennifer Campbell and her staff, I know, will do a great job at that, but we're giving them, obviously, a recreational center. We need a maintenance facility located on the park to handle the elements of mowers and maintenance equipment that will be required to maintain the park. Again, the architectural elements of the maintenance facility pick up on the Recreation Center in regards to materials, roof lines, colors, textures, and shapes. Again, we have numerous recreational components located within the park. The first circle that appears is a, is a large recreational play zone or adventure playground area located just south of Bowlin Road. That's surrounded by a five-acre urban fishing lake with an amphitheater that will more than accommodate Pecanas festivals that they hold year-round, from Pecan, excuse me, salsa festival, as well as the Great American BBQ, and other facilities located within a great lawn. There are two lit basketball courts in the sport court area, two lit tennis courts in the sport court area, two lit sand volleyball courts in the sport court area. There is a restroom concession building, as well as small Ramada and small playground located there, and there's a skate park for the youth. In the middle of the park are four lit championship soccer, football, multi-use fields, surrounded by, to the south and east corner, a regulation-sized baseball field that will, will mimic exactly what's at, Bank, I still call it Bank One Ballpark, excuse me, Chase Field, surrounded by three multi-use softball, baseball fields around the perimeter of that major league field, followed by four multi-use soccer, football fields located in the south quadrant of the project, and then on the farthest southwest corner, a dog park that's divided into two areas for timid and active dogs. And future development potential was also developed in regards to improving Bowlin Road as part of the park project, setting aside some future commercial development, working with the current landowner of the northeast quadrant parcel in regards to infrastructure into that parcel for future development, improvements of Martin Luther King Boulevard that cuts through the project, and two commercial sites, as well as improvements to 347 John Wayne Parkway into the project site itself, allowing those future commercial developments, both the infrastructure and utilities needed to make them successful. We also have major drainage facilities. This project, as the council is well aware, serves as a major flood control mitigation measure put forth as part of the park design, so this park will also help to alleviate flooding north of this project. And we have a cell tower located on the site, which is a revenue generation aspect of the project. It's really a park for all ages, from the multi-generational facility to the recreational components that I just outlined for you. This is a park that the city of Maricopa can be very proud of for many, many years to come. And I thank you very much for allowing me to make this presentation. I look forward to answering any questions you might have.
Thank you. Council, any questions? And just so council knows also, I have a speaker card here for Candace Meadows. Candace, are you in the audience still? Candace, would you like to come up and speak to the council, or would you like to wait until any questions are answered here?
I'd like to.
Okay, all right. I'll call you back before we move on from this item. Any, any questions here, council? No? Okay. Well, seeing no questions, I'm going to go back to you, Candace. Is there anything that you would like to speak on? I know that you are here representing the Dog Park Alliance. There's a dog park here, as you saw. I know that you're very interested in coordinating efforts and, you know, perhaps working together with the city in that dog park.
Mayor, council members, my name is Candace Meadows, and I'm here tonight representing the Maricopa Dog Park Alliance. We haven't really been involved very much in the recent months. We're just here tonight to show our support for the dog park and the site plan, and looking forward to offering assistance and a partnership with the city for our dog park.
Great, great. Is this a good contact information that you listed at the top here?
It is, yes.
I think Jennifer Campbell would love to be in contact with you to make sure that we can work together on that, because I think a partnership would be wonderful.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I move that we approve a gen item SPR 12-11.
Now, there's a motion. Is there a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Onto item 10.2, the resolution of the mayor and city council authorizing the submission of an application for the fiscal year 2013 State Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, certifying the said application meets the community's previously identified housing and community development needs and the requirements of the state CDBG program, authorizing all actions necessary to implement and complete the activities outlined in said application. This item is for discussion and action. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I come before you tonight to request a resolution choosing a project for the CDBG grant, and again, on item 10.3, requesting a project under State Special Projects Grant. The following projects have been presented, and council has had the opportunity to review the projects, costs, and score them. I have no idea how to work this. There we go. Projects that were up for consideration is paving Lexington and Roosevelt Avenue. The total number of points out of 1,400 possible received 1,232 points from council. It was the top-scoring project at the total dollar amount of $288,000. The second project came in, which is Maricopa South Side Water System Improvements and Fire Hydrants Phase II, in which design and engineering has been completed. It scored 1,182 points out of 1,400. Total dollar value of the project is $246,213. The third project is road improvements on Steen Road, scored 1,005 points. The, the total project cost is $810,000, or the estimate. The fourth project is the new Saddleback Vista Water Improvement District arsenic treatment system. 865 points were received for that one, and the total cost for that project is $593,200. Design and engineering have already been completed for that project as well. It is important to remember tonight, as you choose a project for State Special Project as you consider it, design and engineering must be completed for that project in order for that application to be submitted. So when you, when you go forward to choose that project, that is a very key component in choosing it. With that, I'm going to turn it over for discussion and action.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, I apologize. There is one more slide, Mayor. This shows a graph on terms of how the scoring came out in percentages. The blue, 88% of council supports Lexington and Roosevelt. Second is Maricopa Domestic Water Improvement District at 84%. Steen Road Improvement, 71%. 61% is the arsenic treatment system improvement.
Thank you. Council, I guess the, the motion before you hear, the item before you hear is to basically have a discussion based on the scoring. We had the opportunity to look at this in depth, as each of these was somewhat complex, and score them individually and submit them to Mary. Obviously, these are the scoring processes that we each went through to give us a collective. So I guess it's, it's open for discussion to determine whether we should move forward with those that, you know, those things that we have ranked highest, and just real quick, Mary, one of the things that we had talked about was that, you know, the first one is, is the one that is essentially guaranteed to get funded, is that correct, from, from the grants? Or can you explain that? Remember, we had a conversation that one was guaranteed, one was subject to come in, second place was, was not guaranteed, but could potentially be funded.
Community development, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Community Development Block Grant funding is the money that's allocated directly from the Arizona Department of Housing through the Central Arizona Association of Governments. It's money that I, I would call, I guess, guaranteed. We, we submit the application, it is always contingent upon federal appropriation through the president's budget.
Okay.
But it is not a competitive grant, as opposed to the State Special Projects application, where we actually have to submit an application with the other rural entities across the entire state of Arizona, and then compete for the funds, as opposed to where it's a block grant, and it's formula-based.
Okay. Counsel, any discussion on this? Thoughts? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Mary, are any of these four projects not design and architect-ready?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Farrell, the first project, paving Lexington and Roosevelt Avenue, does not have design and engineering completed at this time. However, I do know that it is currently slated in the CIP for next year to have that completed. There is no design and engineering on road improvements for Steen Road at this time as well.
Can I follow up on that, Vice Mayor? If, so then, if the engineering's not done, and we were to approve the Lexington, which came in as far as the first choice, where does that put us in, in receiving these grants? Do they have to be spent at a certain time? How does that work?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in terms of applying for paving in Lexington and Roosevelt Avenue, it's a, a project in which you could apply for Community Development Block Grant funds. It would not be a, a good choice in terms of State Special Project funding, because design and engineering is not completed. So if we would submit the application for the competitive grant, it would be thrown in the garbage can, for back of a letter, better term, because we didn't submit the key component in terms of scoring criteria. For CDBG, we can apply for the funding and get, get funding for the design and engineering phase. They just won't pay for the design and engineering phase under SSP, and they won't even consider the project for funding under a competitive component unless that phase has already been completed before we ask for additional money. They want that completed by the city in advance when asking for a competitive grant.
So if we took the Lexington-Roosevelt Avenue project, we're taking a risk, so to speak, because we don't have it designed-ready?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Farrell, not in terms of the CDBG grant, no.
So in terms of the state funding, because we're not designed-ready. Now, let me ask you something. Is there enough money in the CDBG to do the Lexington-Roosevelt? Is it still $400,000? We split it with Eloy, right?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Farrell, we should have enough money coming in with our partnership with Eloy to cover the cost of it. As you can, I'm trying to bring us back to last year, we were about to submit the application for paving Lexington and Roosevelt Avenue about a year ago, and when I called the Department of Housing, they asked me to pull the application back, because design and engineering wasn't completed.
And it's still not done.
It's still not completed, sir.
Is the Maricopa South Side Water System, is all the design complete on that?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Farrell, yes, it is. And I believe I see Mr. Hoover in the audience, who's a board member of Maricopa Domestic Water Improvement District.
Okay, so, so going off of this conversation, then, would it make more sense to flip the two? You know, to essentially do the Maricopa South Side Water and System Improvements Hydrants Phase II, basically move it to first place, based on the fact that it's competitive grants are ready to go? It would, it would be viable in the competitive in the state shared, as well as CDBG?
Mr. Mayor, I think item 10.2 is just the CDBG grant, which is the guaranteed money. It's the first item up for discussion.
Okay.
Which is the one where you don't have to worry about design and engineering.
Say that one more time.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Farrell, item 10.2 is for the Community Development Block Grant only. So you do not, with the CDBG funding, you do not have to take design and engineering at being complete into consideration when making your choice.
Okay, okay.
Item 10.3 is when you need to take it into consideration.
So I, I guess I'm a little confused here. Sorry about that. If, are we here to make a decision on one of these four tonight?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Farrell, yes, you are.
Then, then why did we score it? Why did you give a packet to all the council to score it? And I thought the scoring, whoever got the highest was going to win the prize.
That's what I thought.
Why are we, why is this even a discussion? I would think that the 1232 wins.
And that's, that's my question. I think it makes total sense to do so. Is there additional clarification here? I mean, it makes total sense to do that, but it's based on the fact that I don't want to, I don't want us to pick something that is going to put us at a disadvantage.
I don't either.
If we don't qualify for something.
Qualify, that's right.
But if we're qualifying for it, then I completely agree with the Vice Mayor that we should be moving ahead with the way it's been scored.
Well, and my, my follow-up on that, where I was leading to is, why did we even score projects that aren't completed in design?
Exactly.
Why were they even put on the table?
Mr. Mayor? Mary, would I be correct in assuming that this is two different funding sources? The CDBG, we can go with project number one, State Special Projects is project number two?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Chapados, yes, you are correct. And Mr. Mayor, and council members, to answer your question, historically, this is how the city has presented the projects, and in order to, I'm sorry, I'm out of a dry mouth, I apologize. In order to officially submit the grant applications, I do need a formal adoption through a resolution being passed through formal council action, which is why they're being presented to council tonight, to formally adopt and choose the project in which the city of Maricopa applies.
Okay, so, so in the way that they have been scored, then, thus far, based on the Vice Mayor's question, and Councilmember Chapados basically responds as well, along with, with Mary, it would be appropriate to do the Lexington-Roosevelt Avenue under CDBG, under the first one? Based, go ahead. Okay. And it would not put us at a disadvantage, because under CDBG, we would get the potential to get it all. However, under the South Side Improvement System, if we approve that under 10.4, or 10.3, that would still be okay, because it falls under a different regulation, because the engineering has been completed. Okay. Gotcha. Vice Mayor.
So if we choose Lexington for the CDBG, we have to pay for the designing and engineering... So if we choose Lexington for the CDVG, we have to pay for the designing and engineering out of our general, how does it, who pays for that, and how does that get done?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Farrell, the city of Maricopa would not be responsible for paying for design and engineering under the CDVG block grant if you choose that project for CDVG. If you choose it for state special projects, the city would need to complete the design and engineering prior to the application for SSP.
Okay.
So if you choose it for CDVG, it will be covered under CDVG.
I think I'm getting on the same page with you now, Mary.
I apologize for the confusion in the grants.
Lots of good acronyms, man. Good stuff to learn. I appreciate it. Is there any further discussion on this? It seems to have made sense now that we've gone through that clarification. With that, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the paving of Lexington and Roosevelt Avenue under the CDVG grant proposal.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Moving on to 10.3, which is a continuation of exactly that, is correct, Mary?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
The resolution of the Mayor of City Council, City of Maricopa, authorizing the submission application of fiscal year 2013 state community development block grant funds, certifying said application meets the community previously identified housing and community development needs. Again, Resolution 13.04. Any further discussion on this item? Yes, Councilwoman.
Yes. Mary, let me ask you, when we were scoring these regarding this specific project, 347, in the hopes of us someday getting to an alignment of 347, these improvements, would they have to be torn out once 347 gets realigned?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Gessi, I'm not able to answer that question, but I'd be happy to get back to you on that.
I actually asked that same question, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I asked the same question, and the answer I received was that, the way the alignment is now, as it goes, if you're looking north, right, up, and then it curves out to the west and goes down, these improvements would be on the west. The alignment would move it east. So if these, so it wouldn't touch it, so it wouldn't have to be ripped out and redone, because the alignment would move east. Is that correct? Am I correct in that statement?
Yes, ultimately, when that project goes forward, they would take all that into consideration, and that would be part of the decision-making and cost process to see, because we don't know where the alignment will ultimately land anyway. So it's so hypothetical, it's difficult to say, but they would take all of that into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Questions? Vice Mayor, you're on.
Mary, you're saying it's two different grants between 10.2 and 10.3, right? One's the state, the state funding, and one's the CDVG funding.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Farrell, yes.
Right, okay. Now, I'm sitting here reading Agenda Item 10.2, and I'm reading Agenda Item 10.3, and from what I can see, they're saying the exact same thing. Am I wrong, or am I missing something?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Farrell, they do read exactly the same, however, within there, there should be an SSP word, state special projects. That is the only difference.
But it's pretty important we get that in there, then, isn't it?
That is the only difference. Otherwise, they do read exactly the same, sir.
Okay. And we want to get that SSP in 10.3?
Yes.
So if we make the resolution, we should, or make the motion, the motion should basically state, instead of CDVG, it should be state special projects.
State special project. All right. So move, Mayor.
It's in the actual resolution? Okay. All right, well, we have a motion from Edward, and a second from Councilwoman Chapados. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And again, that is for the state special projects. Thank you. All right. Item 10.4, thank you very much. This is also a resolution from the Mayor of City Council, the city of Maricopa, naming a community park area located at the corner of Lexington and Roosevelt in the Heritage District. This item is for discussion and action. Jennifer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we are bringing you a recommended name for the park project that's located at Lexington Avenue. This is the night, okay, here we go. First, we want to go over the nomination process. What we did was, any citizen had the opportunity to give a suggestion for the name, and they were able to submit it to the Communications and Marketing Division, or via online through a survey. This opportunity was also promoted via city electronic media to solicit ideas and different names for the park. Submissions were received for consistency with some of the naming guidelines, as well as the marketing partnership policy previously approved by council. Just a refresher for the naming guidelines, which council did go ahead and approve. Names considered can encourage or reflect one or more of the following: an adjoining subdivision or community area, prominent geographical features or location, historical event of significance, an individual, group, or organization, per the additional guidelines, perhaps a deceased individual or a living individual, via a donation or marketing partnership agreement. The process, efforts were made to generate marketing partnership interest, however, there were no responses. An internal review was conducted for consistency with these guidelines, so whatever the names were submitted, we wanted to make sure that they followed those guidelines as well. And staff is before council tonight with three options. One is recommended to select from. The top naming recommendation was Heritage Park. It references Maricopa's history and denotes a location in the Heritage District. This was also the name that was endorsed by the Parks, Rec, and Library Committee, as well as the Heritage District, because of course, with this park being located in the Heritage District, we wanted to get the feedback from that committee, as well as, because it's our first neighborhood park, Parks, Rec, and Library also went ahead and chimed in as well. The additional considerations are Estrella Park and Old Town Park. So tonight before you, if you have any questions, I'll be free to answer those as well. If not, we are asking you to approve the recommended name for the park on Lexington Avenue, so it officially has a park.
Heritage, Old Town, and what?
Heritage, Estrella, and Old Town, the top three. And then the one that was recommended by both PRL and Heritage was indeed Heritage.
It was Estrella.
Nope. Very accurate, not very accurate. Councilwoman.
Is Estrella Park because of the Estrella Gin, I'm just going to assume? Is that where the name, is that what they documented, as far as the?
Looking at the name, of course, people did not have to, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Gessi. People did not have to give an explanation as to why they went ahead and submitted a name. We did not ask for explanation, so it was just along the submittal. And again, there are some areas within Maricopa, again, that like has the Estrella Gin, so it again reflected something that was already here in Maricopa.
It's also under the stars.
It's also under what?
It's under the stars.
The stars.
Located under the stars. Estrella stars.
Council, any discussion, like preferences, things you like, arguments? Kindly, of course.
My thoughts, right off the top of my head, is, this is a small neighborhood park, and our Heritage District is very large. And I don't know if we want to use up the word heritage right away, we've got so much work to do in the Heritage District. Do we want to use this word in a small neighborhood park and never be able to use it again?
There's too many of the word heritage.
Yeah, and that's the first thing that comes to my mind, and I don't like Old Town Park.
Now, with, along those lines, I do like the Estrella name. I also give deference to the committees that have reviewed this, but along those lines, do we have, do we have an additional potential park in the Estrella Gin property? I know that originally, and a lot can change, but originally, we talked about light industrial, we talked about, you know, the Amtrak station, the fire station. Things are starting to take shape. Is there potential still for a park in there?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a park in the Heritage District is currently not in the CIP, but keep in mind that there are other private developers that might choose to build a park in that area, and then as we go through in years forward, the CIP process, it's possible that a site would be designated as park. But we don't currently, other than the Estrella Gin site, we don't currently own a parcel in that area that would be suitable for a park.
Nobody wanted to name it Lexington Park or Roosevelt Park, huh?
It was in there.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Farrell, also within the staff report, there were other naming suggestions, and one of them, there is Lexington Park. So there are several other names that were submitted as well. These were just top recommendations.
So you had received six separate recommendations for Heritage, three separate recommendations for Estrella, and then obviously down the list.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Included in the submissions, it was recommended by the Heritage District Committee to name it Heritage Park, so that's, I mean, they're all on board, I guess.
Right. So I guess, I guess the next question would be, is, to Vice Mayor Farrell's point, I agreed that using it up is, you got to use it at some point, but at the same time, is that, does that give deference to the Heritage District? Or does it, does it take away by not using it now? Because we don't know when the next one will come. Looking for your thoughts.
Personally, I'd rather save the name.
Save it?
Yeah. I think, I think we could utilize this name in a more bigger, broader picture, as far as the Heritage District goes. Like I said, this is a neighborhood park. This isn't a Heritage Park. This is a neighborhood park. So just my personal thoughts, and just one.
Councilmembers, other thoughts?
I like Veteran Park, that's on the list.
Veteran Park? Which? Councilmember Kimball?
Veteran Park.
Veteran Park?
Yeah.
Lexington Park's on the list, too, and it got two votes.
Yes, Councilmember.
Personally, just knowing all of the work and all the citizen involvement that's gone into the Heritage District, and coming up with that name, and a logo, and a branding, I would support the selection of Heritage Park. That's what the people have told us they want.
I hate to, you know, again, I fully believe in the committees as well, but I think the Vice Mayor brings up a really, really interesting point, and personally, you know, I don't know if you like one of these other two, or, I like the Estrella Park, that would still be in those top two, therefore utilizing the saving of Heritage for something perhaps more grandiose in the future.
Something more significant. I agree with the Vice Mayor. You should not demean Heritage for something that's a very small, if you hiccup, you passed it.
True. And Mayor, could I just make a comment? Absolutely no disrespect to our citizens and the committees that put the many hours in trying to come up with a name. I'm just giving you my personal thought, and I'm not trying to disrespect anybody out there. I totally respect all the committee members that spent the long hours trying to come up with names, and now we're just up here trying to make a final decision that's going to have this name on it 50 years from now. So it takes some discussion here.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Brenda, when are we looking at the park to be finished?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Gessi, the park located on Lexington will be done by the end of March.
We just had a discussing here on the side. No disrespect to all those hours spent also by the citizens that came up with the number one name, and the number two, and number three. We're discussing Veterans, the name for the Veterans Park. We were in a committee last week, Councilwoman Chapados and myself, for a Veteran Town Hall. We want to bring a Veteran Town Hall here to the city of Maricopa. There are about 12, we identified 12, but there's more than that, 12 different organizations here in town alone that associate with veterans. There's also over 4,000 veterans just within the community, if you count the surrounding areas, Hidden Valley and Stanfield. And I think the timing would be perfect for our Veterans Park, if we decide to name it as such, when we actually bring that Veteran Town Hall here to Maricopa. So I'm not, that's just, I'm just throwing it out there, just as a suggestion.
Interesting. Favorites? Ideas?
Just to add on to that, and I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, as I'm not a veteran, but I know there's some veterans on the council, but isn't just within the city of Maricopa, isn't there thousands of veterans in the city?
Yes, it's identified, there's over 4,000.
Over 4,000.
Within the local area.
And my first thought is, whatever park we decide to name after the veterans, it's going to be a park that the veterans are going to be very proud of. I can see monuments probably being put up there. I can see the United States flag with the big flag bumping up there. I can see these thousands and thousands of veterans going to this park and reminiscing to this park all the time. Is this park big enough for 4,000 people? And we, and 50 years from now, we might have 20,000 veterans. See, we got to, we got to think 50 years down the road. And is this park going to be able to suffice all the veterans in Maricopa?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Very valid points, but to echo something that Councilmember Brown said, I think if you're going to honor our veterans, you really need to honor them with significant space, the monuments, the importance of it, and it should be a place where community goes to celebrate. So I see that more as maybe a regional park type thing. What about a compromise, the Heritage Australia Park?
Personally, for the park being a neighborhood, and to give it an identity for that neighborhood, I like Lexington Park. It gives it its identity, and it's the neighborhood. It's on Lexington and Roosevelt.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Farrell, parks can tend to be named also after adjacent streets and things like that, so a lot of times, that is an identifier as well.
Does, a quick question, does Lexington run all the way through Acacia crossings? No, it's not aligned that way. It changes names once it gets into Acacia crossings.
Now, again, going back to the branding effort, if, you know, on this, on the Estrella side, being in the top three here, or number two, or whatever, the Estrella, that is the Estrella Gin property, that is the Estrella area, the Dawn Pierce Fire Station is known to be on that Estrella. I don't think that Estrella is going away anytime soon. Should we keep that consistent with the area and the neighborhood from an adjoining perspective? I mean, you're right on the Lexington. Lexington's a great name, and it's, I like it, it is right down the street, but so is the Estrella and the Estrella Gin property. As we, as we attempt to, you know, sell Estrella Gin property to future investors, et cetera, you know, does that help our branding effort at all?
You know why we call it the Estrella Gin property? Because the Estrella Gin used to be put on it. It's an identity. We identify it as Estrella Gin, because that's what's been there forever. It's an identity. Lexington Park, Lexington Road's been there forever, it's in a neighborhood, it identifies the park.
Absolutely. Pretty easygoing on this, either way.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman.
Whatever the council feels.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to name the park Lexington Park.
Second. Okay. Have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion on this? Councilmember Farrel, do you have something to say?
Well, my preference is Australia, but either way, it's okay. I'm okay with the neighborhood park. My thought is, though, is if the neighborhood, the local, in the Heritage District area and the neighborhood, if they're comfortable with Lexington Park. I don't know if, you know, if the thought was Heritage, the Heritage District Committee approved that, does Lexington, and the PRL Committee, does Lexington also ring, you know, if we go that route? So I would want it to name with someone in the neighborhood that they can identify with it, and they're okay with Lexington.
Brenda, do you have?
Mr. Mayor, we do have representatives from the Heritage District present. Perhaps they'd like to say a few words.
Anyone from the Heritage or PRL like to perch the council, give their two cents? Renata?
No.
You've been elected by a committee?
Absolutely. Everyone wants to see your shining face on TV.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Lexington Park sounds fine to me.
That was easy.
I think it's okay, but I'm one person, out of all the residents there, but I initially went for Heritage Park, but that's why Vice Mayor Farrell brought up. I see the point of not doing that. I hadn't thought of that. I don't think anybody in the committee at the time thought of that either. Lexington Park sounds fine to me, as an individual.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Renata. Appreciate it.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
There is, any other discussion? Councilmember Kimball, do you have anything? Nope. The motion on the table here, on the floor, with With that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Lexington Park carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, item 10.5, the Mayor of City Council shall discuss, or excuse me, finally, Mayor of City Council shall discuss, possibly take action on approving conditional use permit, CUP 12-05, a request by Taiyi Southwest LLC to allow professional office use in the General Rural Residential Zoning District located 44302 West Maricopa Cassagrand Highway.
Move to approve.
Second.
Wow.
Tell them to get started yesterday on this, please.
Before we go there, I do have a question, though. On this, there was, this is for a period of four years, but in the contract, it says five years. So I guess I'm curious on the discrepancy, and which one is it?
Actually, I think it's for a period consistent, 2006, for a period of four years under, let's see here, let me take a quick look at the stipulations. Oh, that was the previous use permit, that was approved. This particular use permit is approved or is being recommended for approval with the stipulation that it coincides with the lease agreement.
Okay, I'm reading a lease agreement executed the 20th day of November 2012. So is that the old one?
No.
Okay, so it says here for a period of five years.
Okay, correct. From the original applications, what they applied for, however, in the stipulation, stipulation number three, staff pointed out the CUP is valid for a period of approximately four years and 10 and a half months, based on when we wrote the report, when this got actually scheduled for hearing. So it would, in that event, coincide or fall on the same expiration date as the lease agreement, so we know that both of those will come up at the same time, aside for the confusion.
No, perfect. Answer my question, thank you. We have a motion on the floor, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And finally, 10.6, an ordinance in the Mayor of City Council, City of Maricopa, amending Section 2-34E of the Maricopa City Code regarding the State of the City address and providing for severability and the effective date thereof discussion and action. Anyone presenting on this one? Paul, are you presenting on that one? You don't have to. Do you want me to present it?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, according to our code, the State of the City must be conducted prior to the end of the month of February, and this is just a change to allow the State of the City to be held at the discretion of the mayor and council. So it changes that and allows some flexibility. Questions?
Did we set that code?
You're a founder of the council, so you get to set that code.
I think I see this, city manager is about to-
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make sure I clarified something. The change is recommended to allow the mayor to choose the date and time, not the mayor and council to choose the date and time.
My apologies.
And this also will benefit the city when we go over to the new terms, timing, because the new mayor would be sworn in, and, not new as in not you, but just necessarily, whoever sworn in as mayor would be in January, and then that means they would only be on the job a couple of weeks before having to give a State of the City.
We don't have to want to hear their campaign all over here.
Most definitely. So, yeah, it just moves it, as we were talking about State of the City, this came up with Vanessa City Clerk in the City Code. Obviously, in the middle of February, it becomes problematic, but it's up to the council.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, soops. All right, roll call.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimball?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Yes.
Councilmember Potter?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapados?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you all attending tonight. Have a motion to move to each session?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.